We are going to call back and order the August 20th meeting with Caroline County Board of the Simplifiers. We recessed the meeting, Joe Al, Tom, and everybody together so we could have this work session to discuss issues and to make sure that we continue to work together as a community and as a family to provide the best fire rescue service that we can to our friends and our neighbors and to support everybody and keep them safe. So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's wonderful to see everyone. And so at this time, I'm going to start the meeting with giving Chief Loftus time to speak, and then we're going to discussion. Chief?
I think what brought us here, it's kind of odd to sit and speak. Usually I stand and I'm like, you know, a little different. What brought us here really is the CIP process. And for us, in fire rescue, the CIP process is something we do annually around the October, November timeframe, so we can have it submitted in the budget and to you for review after the first of the year. We do that every year, and we've been doing that at least since I've been here, and I know it, Chief Layman. And part of the ordinance that establishes the fire department and the fire chief, it is in there that the department will review and submit an apparatus recommendation to the board as part of its budget submission. Part of that is to make sure whatever we recommend is realistic, that it can be funded within the confines of what we have to spend countywide, and that's going to meet the needs for the department operationally now and looking down the road. But keep in mind, when we make those decisions, we're making them very far in advance of when the apparatus will be here. Generally takes us about a two-year process from the time we approve the CIP to getting a truck in. And I think on the last board meeting, what brought us to this meeting here was the squads, the two squads that we anticipate ordering. We've ordered Squad One already. And I want to talk a little bit about that process and how we came to some of those decisions from Squad One.
When you say squad one or whatever, would you say what station it comes out of, just to make sure, especially for the cameras and all that stuff?
Okay. When we refer to anything that's a one or Squad One, it's going to Bowling Green. If we refer to anything that's Squad Two, it's going to Ladysmith. And that's how our stations are numbered, ones, twos, et cetera. Squad One, the idea to replace that and the concept to create both squads equally, equipped equally, and designed equally was back in November of 2016 is when we started. We started having that discussion. And I just want to tell you why, as far as the fire chief, I sought those two trucks to be identical in their design. So our department, although small, in the combination, we operate a tremendous amount of time with just two people. So we're understaffed, and most of the time during the daytime, we do have volunteer support during the nighttime hours, but in the overnight hours, we struggle more to have that support. So when I look at how we respond to a car accident, we generally take an ambulance and a heavy squad to that, which then need an engine for backup. So for all of our extrication, for our member's safety, we like to have a charged hose line on the ground in case something happens where a car catches on fire, we have that ability to extinguish it. So for me, having water on that truck was an employee safety issue. When I say employee, I mean volunteering career. All of our trucks today have water. We have a squad, Squad Two, and Ladysmith has water, and we use that a lot. And operationally, that's an important piece for us. We're a small fleet. Our trucks break a lot. And in 2016, when we sat down and talked about this, I didn't think a couple of years later, we'd be looking at a brand-new reserve engine. So you've got to keep that in mind in the context of when this decision was made. So being able to get one truck on the road with water that can do extrication, can do advanced extrication, was the best option for our size department now and looking down the road. I do not see us manning an engine with full-time staff, a squad with full-time staff, and be able to get an ambulance out as well anytime down the road. So having one truck that can do both was essential. The other issue is for the two squads on either side of the county to be equipped the same. Again, either squad is subject to go anywhere in the county, Port Royal, Sparta, it's even subject to go to Ladysmith or Bowling Green, vice versa, because of our staffing. And being able to pull up on scene and have all of our department members know where things are on that truck and how to use those things is a big issue. Being the same, they cut down on training, and they cut down on cost of equipment. So we can have the equipment serviced, it can be duplicate. When the two squads get there, you're now a force multiplier on what you can do with the equipment that you do have. Caroline spent a long time, at least on extrication equipment, with a variety of different brands. And we would have two or three engines show up and not be able to use the same tools with the same burst pump or other devices. I think we had Amkiss, we had Hurst, we had the original Job of Life, so we had a variety of brands. So looking at a truck that, the same on both sides of the county, to improve our efficiency and our service delivery. In 2016, why replace Squad One? Why not replace another truck? Squad One at the time, in 2016, would have been the oldest truck we wanted to replace in the CIP. The only other truck that would have been older would have been the tanker in Port Royal. And so we also have an engine in Upper Carolina, but that was not causing us a lot of problems as far as mechanics. And again, looking at what we can do with a squad that had water on both sides of the county was in our best interest. That squad also experienced some SCBA refill problems over the years. Those have been corrected, and we now do have another problem with the SCBA refill on that truck. As I said, it could not function as an engine. Squad One is completely dry, and at times, that put us at a disadvantage, both from a manpower standpoint and equipment standpoint. Because again, our stuff breaks down, and that can't run in place of an engine. The other issue for me is looking at Squad One's mileage. It's about 77,000 miles. The truck is 20-plus years old. If I look down on the other side of the county, Squad Two has about 100,000 miles more than Squad One. And one of the reasons for that is Squad Two, Squad Two can be utilized as an engine or a squad. It has that ability when it needs to. And when I look at a 20-year-old truck that's got 77,000 miles on it, my issue is we haven't utilized that full lifespan of that truck. Trucks, when we start keeping them more than 20, 22 years, we experience a lot of problems. And those problems may not be mechanical breakdowns, but they could just be as simple as the insulation on the electric system starts to degrade and crack, and we face a lot of ground faults and ground shorts. And when they become 20 years old, trying to find parts for those trucks becomes an exercise in difficulty by far, and that increases our total cost of ownership on those trucks. So for me, I want to make sure that all of our trucks, whether it's engines, squads, or ambulances, they live out their life in years, and we maximize how we're using them in that timeframe. The squad process for Squad One began, as I said, in 2016, bringing the CIP to the command staff meeting and discussing it there. Budget was submitted. A committee was formed in 2017 that represented us from Bowling Green, Ladysmith, and one representative from the career staff. So we had somebody on either side of the county that had squads and one of the career representations on that committee. At that time, Bowling Green's representative was District Chief Hartle, and Ladysmith was District Chief Nelson. From January to June of 2017, that group held meetings to determine what equipment the squad would carry. Before we ever sat down to design it, we decided what it was going to carry and what capacity it could perform in the street. Can I just, a second? On these meetings, you have these meetings, we attend these meetings. In the beginning, I set some of the parameters. I let the meetings go for a while, and then started attending again.
Are these meetings the minutes, are they sent, are those meetings sent to you?
A lot of those meetings, I, somebody kept minutes, but we have some of those yet.
You have all of them or just some of them? Do they have a meeting as a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement. No. Now, if I was at the meeting, I generally tried to have minutes so I could remember what had to be done in the following weeks. In June of 2017, District Chief Hartle, unfortunately for job reasons, had to step down. But in his letter to the committee, and I quote, he says, "I do feel that we have a solid foundation to move forward with, but I just do not see my involvement being much over the next five months." So at that time, the process was moving well. We had good buy-in. In June to July, Bowling Green, District Chief Hartle stepped down, put another representative on the committee. They stayed a couple of months. And also, we had a third representative on the committee. And then finally in November, or excuse me, in August, Bowling Green appointed Brian Marmaduke to serve on the committee. He will serve in that capacity until now. The board approved the fire to the squad in November of 2017. The committee traveled to KME in January of 2018 and finally approved the plans in April. And that squad will be here sometime in the November timeframe. So with that process, we've had some turnover in the committee members, but for the most part, the process has gone along very well. I think in the end, the product that has been designed, the time that's been put into it, will serve Caroline County for a very long time. So with that, there were some questions toward the end. At the request of the board, we created a supplemental document. You saw that last month, that went into really trying to explain our CIP process as a whole, to explain our graphics design. All of those things were just putting down what we've already been doing for the last several years on the CIP. You remember the first real apparatus purchase as far as fire goes was Engine Five, or Engine Three. We just finished Engine Four.
Three's where?
Three is for oil. We just, Five, as product level. We did a brush truck in Port Royal, and we just finished a brush truck modification in Sparta. So those were part of that. But again, we put that in writing because there was some issues with Squad One and labeling and the graphics on that truck. So again, we wanted to make sure that got in front of everybody in writing, as well as explaining the CIP, the direction for that. In August, I'll finish up with this. In August, I had, August 2nd, had a discussion with District Chief Cooling about some concerns on Squad One and the new squad, as well as potentially some other needs that they may have. And at that time, they expressed an interest, he expressed an interest, possibly in continuing to use the current Squad One for another year and switching that delivery to Ladysmith, being the first year and the second year the new squad would go to. Again, that is something we would certainly entertain, in my opinion. The current squad that will be here in November needs to go to Bowling Green, but we could certainly switch that if we need to, were the board to have that decision. You all know, based on the last board meeting, that we do have a price increase if we order the second squad after September 1. You're looking at about $35,000 increase. That really has to do with metal tariffs. So I would urge you, if we are going to move forward, that we do that.
There's no dispute that we need two squads. One coming down this fall, next February. No, no issue for it. Just not on where the first one goes.
Yeah, and as I said, if we had to flip-flop that order, it's not, it's not the end of it.
Same truck, same.
How quick was the timeframe? Flip-flopping orders, since they're all standard, it's really just a lettering. Right.
A little bit of customization. Bowling Green wanted some customized things on there, but those, they're paying for. So that's, it's all complimentary. Likewise, Ladysmith put some things on there that they're funding as well.
So they're going to be functionally standard?
Correct.
But aesthetically, there may be some differences?
One has some chrome panels at the bottom.
Bowling Green's got 22-inch rear design.
Not, not even that.
Ladysmith's got something different, but it's that kind of thing.
Yes, yes.
Nothing to do with anything?
If you parked them side by side, you wouldn't be hotel. You wouldn't be hotel.
Oh, operationally, they're the same?
Operationally, they're the same. It has to do with a couple of different lights and some chrome panel.
Okay. Not to be able to tell if they're parked together, it's different?
I know.
You'd have to know what you're looking for.
All right. So quick order, say $35,000.
All right. So now, thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. That takes us to discussion. So I don't know if you want to switch into the tablet, you want to start, you want to split display, you want to raise your hand, anybody have anything they'd like to discuss? Any comments, any discussion on anything that?
Go down the list, start right to right. Stephen, we need to just want to?
Just to remind you, he mentioned 2016 is when we started this venture down the path for two identical squads. The reason was, is in 2016, I stood before y'all and asked to surplus Tower Two. In relation, it was, I was trying to get Squad Two moved up. We need that truck replaced in a sooner fashion. Y'all agreed with that. We approved to surplus Squad Two, has been since sold and decommissioned, with the purpose of us moving forward with the purchase of Squad Two. We stand behind the CIP as it's currently presented, as it states, I stand behind the process we used to standardize these two pieces of equipment that we have inbound, hopefully after tonight, in the process that was done, making sure that the best interest of the community was at heart and service to the citizens. But outside of that, I don't have anything else to add.
Regarding Squad Two, will there be any residual value or use to the county about these, you know, any surplus?
And again, you voted out the surplus policies.
Agree. I just didn't know if it would be, but then as the reserve fleet, it was, it's just worn out.
Worn out.
Yeah, but I mean, you just said surplus.
We came before the board, and that's when we made the final.
But it didn't matter.
It was dead.
It was a little right. I guess I have a little bit to fight.
District Chief, you have to say? Just a brief statement I, Executive Board asked me to read, and just want to let them know that I am the sole elected representative authorized by the executive leadership to speak on half the squad. And I would like to take a minute to praise and thank Chief Loftus for his direction, cooperation, and advice through the years. He is dedicated to the department's mission, which is to provide for the citizens of our county and those who may cast their vote with the most efficient delivery of fire protection, emergency medical, disaster relief services that can be accomplished by frugally choosing all resources available to us with special focus on the most valuable resources which we are equal. Our squad has nothing but praise for Chief Loftus and his efforts to provide all these services to Caroline. With that said, with this capital improvements, the executive leaders of LDRS has carefully examined the CIP process and believed it to be fair and reasonable. The executive leaderships have given the pilots full support and have directed, have been directed to relay the support of the sole, as the sole official position Ladysmith voluntary rescue squad, to be support this in our.
And as Chief has told, the CIP is included in breathing document, and needs or emergencies come up, it's not set this show. So it's good to have a good base of life since this day of meeting.
Yep, I don't see Engine Ten on here.
You guys have to bump it.
My hope is by 2027, we'll have Engine Ten in service.
Yes, I'm representing Squad Five. The CIP, we're pretty much in agreement with the CIP, it serves Bowling Green with their issues. And I'll say the same, so the chief doesn't know anything we need to ask him to do. Now, we'll say something, this might, might not be the right time, but we really need to have a discussion about station as well. We're in a desperate need down there. Every time we get a bunch of rain, we get a bunch of storms. That can't be going anymore. It really needs to be seriously taken. I mean, I've had a lot of lip service, and yeah, we want to do something, but there was a time, so.
I don't want to beat anybody up here because he's done a really good job, Chief Loftus. Just in the CIP, our tanker's not to be replaced. Where we are, that puts us 20 miles from your tanker. I don't see how you can operate in a rural area with no fire hydrants. They're putting a nice, pretty system in down there, but all they're going to do is after they're done, they're going to give us a two-inch line coming off the side that we can get a little water out of. But, you know.
Let me say, I know that my town council.
Oh, I know. Yeah, but not replacing our tanker, I just, there's no way I can not say something. I understand money's tight and everything, but the top.
Should work that in.
I really, I'd like to take a look at it and see if there's some way we can work a tanker in, and ours gives up. I mean, right now, it's a great good check.
Right, so we've got some time. We still have a long one.
Oh, yeah, ours.
Which is old, and it has a lot of.
How old is it?
Old. Twenty-seven.
How many miles?
Thirty. Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Which is?
It's going, it's just a few weeks.
Right now, we don't have, we don't have the CIP, over the length of the CIP dock. We've got all these other trucks that are fine. The issue for a lot of this is, do I think they need a tanker? Without a doubt. Right now, staffing is tough up there to get more than one truck out. Their engine has 1,000 gallons. We have other needs that are in front of them that are significant. If things change, if there's growth up there, or there's more money, or there's a space in the CIP where you find some money, somebody comes into the county, we open three or four more. That's my one.
Get some revenue in the county.
That's certainly something we can look at. My fear is, I put that in there, I put an engine and a tanker in one year, Mr. Colly's going to say, which one do you want? And I got to keep bumping something back. So again, I'm trying to put forth something that he can actually, and you can actually approve in fund.
I have a question. Does anything help have a tanker?
They do.
I did. So if we get, just in case yours breaks down.
Yeah, it's, it's got to come through the main gate, it's, you know.
The communication with the tanker at the baby hill is going to be delayed by the time you can dispatch it, dispatch it. Well, so even though it's closer, you might as well consider it to be like a second duty further away because of the communication.
Because I think the, the.
Well, that's exactly, Essent County has one that's closer than any tankers in County, but by the time you get the delay in there, you know, it's the same to go to the second duty.
About the same to Chief George, I guess you can always put a towel around all three of those areas, leave all the same distance.
Same, same delay is a holiday deal.
And just so the board knows, we're going to continue to keep that truck in service. We just did a brake job on it, $2,300. It's not something that, it has to be a catastrophic failure or something that we just, you know, it's not feasible to fund.
So they have a?
Just because things are old.
Engine tanker brush, right, that's station, right.
I got a new engine last year, that's the first new piece I ever got. I'm used to working with old, but I don't have a problem with something that's functional. I just.
Then you got a brush truck.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're looking down the road.
Put that tanker.
Hi. I just want to say, on behalf of Bowling Green Rescue, we applaud everyone for helping the community with the apparatus. I know it's a big, big chore for everybody to come together, for the chief especially to show his appreciation for everything that everybody's doing basically. But we stand together, and we're here if anybody needs our assistance, as well as our input, I'm just, we're here. I want everybody to know that we are here. We're glad you are. We're glad you are.
It's kind of hard for me to complain about anything when I got a brand-new $500,000 piece of apparatus that just got put in the building.
You can announce the what, yeah.
And I do want to say, though, as a chief calling for more resources, it is very helpful knowing exactly what is on the rigs that you're calling for. So that standardization, especially with the squad, makes a big difference because traditionally, depending upon where you go, different squads, they specialize in different things. And we don't have the manpower or the people in this county to specialize on anything because everybody's got to be so diverse to do everything. So having squads that are the same makes a big difference when you're calling for something, you know what you're getting. So I do, I do like the fact that they are becoming standardized. How they become standardized, that's up to the people that are running them, not me. But that fact does, does help a lot. So I do, I do applaud the push to have them standardized.
Your, your new engine can handle basic extrication, door one open, roof needs to come off, the nuts and bolts and stuff.
Yes. If I need to call for the squad, it's because it's going to be multiple vehicles or a extrication that's going to be prolonged, so that we're going to want multiple tools in different, different spots. And something like that, the squad will have the ability to do a lot more than I will. So that's the, I guess I got, most of the pumppers in the county can handle a basic, yeah, basic door pops. They can even go as full removal, it just takes longer.
Everybody, all engines have a complete set of hydro.
All six.
But an extra two in the squad.
An extra two in the squad. Each squad will have two.
An extra vehicle, so we have eight vehicles that can perform extrication.
Correct.
And the squad will be double, so they'll have a battery-operated system as well as a wet system, hydraulic.
Airbags.
Airbags.
And some operating trucks.
Hello, are we speaking specifically on Squad One now and replacement of that?
Whatever, so whatever you want to speak on, go for it if you want to do that.
Okay.
Because I don't have a separate section for that, so.
Okay. Well, first off, I mean, I got quite a few things, but I guess, I'm the part that will be the Fire Chief of Bowling Green, volunteer fire department, speaking on behalf of Bowling Green. And I guess, just to bring the board up to date with everything that we have there, we currently have a utility that's in the station, which is pickup. It's our first response calls, EMS calls, training, things like that, taking gear, accessories, other things that may need to get to a call on that pickup. And it is able to respond, it has lights in its market. We have a brush truck. That truck has got about 40,000 miles. It's a 1999 Ford. I guess, pretty good shape for what it is. It's slated for replacement, I think, within the next couple of years. Personally, I mean, I think it's got a little bit more life left in it. It could probably get stretched out a little bit if needed to. We have a 1994 Pierce Lance, which has 750 gallons of water on it. That truck has ran 270, it's actually ran 330 calls out of company one this year, more than our 2006 Pierce dash pumper, which is 12 years newer, and it's had a lot of mechanical issues. So when I look at something that, you know, comes up in this plan for replacement, you know, I look at, we're going to replace Squad One. That truck has 75,000 miles. That is a 1997 truck. That is a specialty piece. And when I say that, we're using that term, Tower One, Tower Two, they would have been specialty pieces, so they're going in the county. We do have Squad Three, that's kind of light duty, you know, specialty piece, and then you have Squad One. I don't classify Squad Two as a specialty piece, that's considered a pumper. It carries just as much water as wagon one. That's why it has a lot of miles, it's been utilized as an engine. Does it have extrication efforts on it? Yes, it does, so does Engine Two, I do believe, which Chief brought up. But those two trucks were utilized as engines out of that station, whereas Bowling Green was utilized as, you know, Engine One, wagon one, those were utilized for fire suppression. Squad One was utilized for extrication efforts, you know, specialty tech rescue, hazmat calls, things of that nature. So yes, that truck does have less miles on it. Does it get used? Yes, I do agree. So, you know, the other night, I went out on Friday night, two weeks ago, we had five people on it. So does that happen every day? No, it doesn't, because, you know, we're volunteers, we're not here 24/7, it's happening. But we do supplement, and I think it's important to have that apparatus in the station and available for use for the citizens of the county, you know, that it's there and that it's, it can be used. Does it get out every single day? No. Would I love it to? Yes, I would. But we don't have the staff, and we try to invest as we can with that combination department. I mean, I do have a lot of statistics or things that, you know, if the board has any questions about those apparatus that were stationed there. You know, I feel both engines have roughly 150,000 miles on them. It's almost double what the squad is, and we're going to place that truck first. I mean, that's, that's why I'm here. I'm bringing up. I mean, that's, that's why I'm here, I'm, I'm bringing it up, because, you know, I feel that's the problem. We're gonna replace it with two hundred and fifty gallons less than what wagon one has. And then we'll replace engine one, that's gonna go down two hundred and fifty more gallons, because that's gonna be replaced with a pumper that's got a thousand gallons.
So, which is the one that, which is the one that came to break it down?
Engine one, the newest truck that we have. It's a two thousand and six, it has twelve hundred gallons of water, fifty gallons of fuel. It's kinda, I, I don't know, but I think it's pretty much the exact same as engine two, that Ladies Smith, uh, chief Nelson may be able to verify that for me, but I think those trucks are bought pretty much two years apart, they're pretty much identical trucks to what they are.
That's right. We tried to, uh, marry our truck to be as standardized as theirs was when we purchased ours other than the color, and in fact, ours is two years newer, there's really no difference with the capacity of what that truck...
Yours has behaved itself, though.
It has its issues, yes.
All right, I mean, how many miles do you guys have on that truck? Do you know roughly?
Chief, it's up over a hundred thousand.
Is that just the manufacturing?
It's, um, ours, uh, was the first year they went to depth fluid, uh, on a Caterpillar motor, so we've had issues with the drive train. That's pretty much it, it's the drive train.
We do not, we have a D-Tort leader in that, and it does not have depth fluid on that. They're mostly, I think that's standard for...
Different, differently.
Uh, yes, I, I mean, our truck's out of service quite good, I think more than engine two is. I mean, it shows on here, the chief's statistics shows that we have roughly a hundred and, almost a hundred thousand more repair costs for our engine personally, so that's a good time.
Traditionally speaking, newer apparatus does not hold together the same as the old ones.
For what reason?
I think it'll make them like they used to.
Correct.
Just like that's true.
Chief Marley. Make yourself, man.
Is this, this engine that you're talking about has been consistently breaking down?
Yes.
For a few years?
I, I would say, I started in two thousand and nine, it was, you know, it was pretty good there, and I would say it's been the last five, seven years.
So what was the reason, I mean, do you guys need, what was the reason that from like the CIP, they said they were meeting in two thousand and sixteen on the CIP, that was that brought up in fact, then, two thousand and sixteen that the engine needed to go ahead in the squad? Because what I heard from chief law office just a couple minutes ago is everyone's simply gone, "Oh, we're gonna replace the squad until August." I mean, so I'm, I'm just kinda curious if the, if the membership, I just wondered, if the Bowling, Bowling Green memberships meeting, and then we're okay with, hey, the squad, squad, and then changes, if the engine was that glaring, why wouldn't it be, if it was a problem two years ago, why wouldn't it be brought up two years ago?
I don't wanna tell you the wrong answer to that, I myself was not in a leadership position for the department two years ago. Um, I do think that wagon one, in the CIP, for replacement, that was pushed back. Uh, if I could call somebody that's been in the department longer, I mean, they may be able to answer that question for you.
If I remember correctly, in two thousand and sixteen, the discussion of building the squad began, but in two thousand and sixteen, the replacement, as chief Nelson said, was the focus of squad two getting replaced. So we would build the specs together. In the meantime, and then two-year break, I was out, squad one somehow never jumped in front of squad two, and that's mainly our concern at Bowling Green. It's not saying we don't need a squad eventually, but we don't understand how squad one and squad two jumped each other. When Ladies Smith was the one that approached the board about surplus of tower two, and squad two, it replaces squad two. So it made sense to come together in August to do that joint study, and granted, yes, we did have a change of leadership, and everybody can tell you, there's a different philosophy of every fireman out there on whether you have water on squad or you don't. I don't think we, we're fighting that battle yet, but the biggest thing is, give us a little more time to plan our next steps, and like I said, I'm not sure how squad two got jumped by squad one.
Squad, squad one was always in the front end. What we pushed back was engine six, that's what got pushed back, and I guess, bringing it together.
But, but give us more time to work out the thing, I don't understand that if the average thirty-five thousand dollar day long.
Well, I was gonna ask, wagon one should have been replaced, what, I mean, maybe five years ago. I mean, that truck's gonna get pushed off, pushed off, that pumper should have been replaced. Is that, that's, that is correct. Right, that truck got pushed off, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna replace squad one.
Again, we're replacing squad one, so we have that capacity. We put a lot of money in wagon one after the pump froze, so we, we gotta do pump on there, arguably, you may mention this, that is a better running truck, um, than what we have in engine one. In two thousand and sixteen, if I could tell you that I want, I wanna come to you and replace a ten-year-old fire truck, um, I don't think this board would allow that regardless of what repairs. You would say, "Chief, make the repairs, and let's see if they fix and work in the next two years." Um, so again, when you submit to CIP, you're doing the best you can with the data you have then, but, um, to ask you to put another chunk of five hundred thousand in a truck that's ten years old at that time, I, I would, I would for a hand, right?
Chief, so, so is that the real issue? I mean, the timing of replacement, must be replaced, that's the crux of the issue. I mean, I...
Well, I mean, I think wagon one should have been replaced, that's five years, what it was, and that got pushed off in the CIP.
So, so that's your issue?
I mean, I've got...
Well, that's, that's the issue.
Well, right now, we're dogged, sir. I mean, I, you know, I feel that we got two trucks that have twice the mileage to replace the truck.
You don't understand how, how, why two, how, how do you flip the term of replacement when we ask?
I mean, I don't, I, I sit here and speak, I've talked to my whole department, we all, everybody is a membership, we feel that squad two should be, that truck should be placed in service before we get a new one. That's why, I mean, I told the chief that, so, two weeks ago, I said, "When you buy these two trucks, I feel that Ladies Smith needs the truck first, they got a hundred thousand more miles." Our, our squad's...
But the real point is, you don't want that second truck now, you want some other things now.
I, I mean, I, whatever would happen, I mean, that's, that's what here and there, I mean, I think...
Well, that is, that is your, that is the point.
That is the point.
They need to have the water that's there, I mean, we're, I don't wanna take away water that we have, you know what I'm saying?
And that's it.
That's one...
That's what we're trying to figure out, is what your point is.
And then, you know, also, I think that the county needs a specialty piece, and when we say, "Hey, we're gonna get a", you know, I mean, the new squad's gonna have five hundred gallons of water, we can go back and forth all day, you know, the, the county's eighty percent, you know, non-hydrogen, and that means that we don't have...
I, I understand, so it's great.
And we're gonna get a truck that's five hundred gallons of water.
All right, real quick, what, what it builds on is, if you go down that CIP, the way the CIP reads, we have, we're gonna have in three years when they start replacing it, our engines, we're doing away with wagon one. All right, so we currently have two thousand gallons of water in our station, twelve fifty on engine one, seven fifty on, on wagon one. They're gonna replace wagon one, and, or not replace wagon one, that's going off of our CIP. That is one of our concerns, is being replaced with a wet squad that has five hundred gallons. So we're going from one truck, I mean, two trucks, down to one truck with less water. So that's, it's, it's, as chief Cooley was saying, it is, it's a combination. We can deal with the, the five hundred gallons of squad, but we also have an issue with removing wagon one from the budget and going down to one engine and Boeing.
Well, let me, let me address that, I, I can quickly cover that. Wagon one unto itself is not being replaced. You are not losing two engines, okay? Engine one will take the spot of wagon one, and you will have a new engine one. So you'll have a new engine one that is currently today will become wagon one as you will, you will get a new engine one. So you will always have two fully functional engines.
Wait, wait, I have a question. Wait, 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 I have a question.
CIP, that's where, that's why...
It says, wagon one be replaced through matriculation, um, of the second truck.
But we're gonna go to two trucks with five hundred gallons, we're gonna go to two engines.
No, no, all our engines today will have a thousand gallons of water. We are not, we are not essentially buying a new wagon one and keeping the old engine one. So all that's gonna happen is wagon one, once it finally dies, or you replace engine one, we'll move that twelve-year-old truck down into that spot, and we'll have, no, we'll go to Bowling Green. Bowling Green will always maintain two engines and one wet squad.
Somebody's giving up their truck here tonight.
So that, does that answer that question?
That answers the matter, but that's not how I interpreted that CIP, it's not a fleet of engines. Yeah, that's, that's just not how I interpreted, the nature of the line.
See, that, and that's the thing, chief, we, we need to figure out what your issue is, because we're working on a standardization program, if we can financially plan to buy things, because fire trucks are not cheap.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, we need to sort of express it as a department that we weren't getting that basic wagon one, just one engine, one squad, and all of a sudden, I think Ladies Smith needs a new one, yes. Our start...
As long as we rotate, as we scale, we're still...
That's, that's what it's going to, when they standardize that, they wanna have water. We don't have water right now, we cannot, it's, that's why I say it's a specialty piece, it's not have water. It's designed to, to fulfill a specialty piece, and big cities have that, so, easy to show, so rest of cities, they have specialty pieces on it, they can take them.
There'll be a lot of fire...
And, and we have...
Or, or, you know, extrication.
Never, never will.
So, they also have a lot more manpower to stay at...
That's the issue, they got a lot more manpower. For us to have water on that truck, if we, if we, if that is the only truck we get out on the interstate, I wanna be able to put out a car fire. If we're driving back home from the interstate and something happens, I want that truck to be able to pull up and give something. Uh, if we're doing an extrication, I want that truck to be able to protect our people with charge on it, that's fundamentally...
Yeah, okay, yours is...
Chief, it's in there.
Where it says...
I think Mr. Black has a question.
I, I'm hearing, uh, the need for a specialty piece. Were the, were the tankers specialty pieces, I mean, the ladders, or the, the towers, I'm sorry, were they specialty pieces?
Very much so.
A boat is a specialty piece.
Okay. I would think, if you're on beach specific, tankers are also considered special. We don't have a tower.
So, but the two towers, they were specialty pieces, they're no longer, right?
No longer, just...
Are we still paying for those towers?
Yeah.
So we're still paying for two towers. Now, what CIP was that?
Hey, we're here.
What CIP, what CIP was?
It was prior to the fire chief, so prior to two thousand and nine.
All right, thank you.
So specialty piece, engines considered specialty piece.
I, I, I hear you, and, and I, and I understand that. Chief Austin and I had a pretty lengthy discussion about his, his perspective, and since I've been under the word, we're coming up on three years, it's, we're not getting out, we're not getting out, we're adding professional staff, we've added at least a dozen, and, and, uh, we added two more this year. Um, the last thing we would wanna see is, yeah, we got a, we got squad out, we got an engine out, but we needed the other. And, I understand where he's coming from, it's, if we can't, if we can't reliably expect a second truck to get out, and what they do out less is that, there's one truck, you might, you might have to drive fifty miles to the, to the fire, but it's gigantic and it has everything they might need, might have eight people on it, but they're on, they know they're only gonna get one truck out. And I, I think that's, the decline in the volunteer response is pushing him in a corner with the respect that, I gotta kind of frame all of these decisions and frame the policies and things and, and the staffing that, I'm only gonna get one truck out. Because, and, and I understand, at night we do better, and some days we do great, and, but it's, some days we suck, and it's, and, and we, and it's, and it's hard, all right, what's, what's my, there's no magic bullet to solve everyone's issues, but having water on a squad actually is, is a nice compromise. Um, I mean, looking at it from, from, I'm only gonna get one out, what I want it to have, and it's, and talking with them, I would love it better for the tanker in every station, I would love that, you know, I like that we have extrication abilities with all the equipment. Um, and I, you and I spoke, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm, I'm tempered with the whole, the whole, we don't, we don't get some of them out sometimes at the, some of the outer stations, and a lot of times, we do get one out, we get one out, and that's the paid staff on it, but...
If, if I can ask a question, so, uh, I mean, it doesn't happen all the time, but, I mean, would, would, asking the board, what do we have staff for fire and rescue? Fire suppression pieces in the county every day, you guys?
Staff?
Staff, for the, for the fire suppression. So, I, I mean, I'm asking, you know, the board, because what happens is if those two engines mark up, if they have an extra EMS call, that crew jumps off, gets on an ambulance, and you don't have fire suppression in the county, correct? So then, I mean, I, it's happened numerous times this year that volunteers have filled in for that.
But we're gonna take away the volunteers, because everybody's got the volunteers.
But I guess what I'm saying is, it's better to have the trucks sitting there, able to be used, than not to have it at all, and trying to consolidate now where we're going, you know, we got rid of ladder trucks. What happens if we have a need for a ladder truck in Carolina, right? We're automatically calling mutual aid, automatic, twenty-minute response, anywhere you look at it, spots a man in hand. So I, you know, then what are we gonna do? We get a mass of extrication on the interstate, you got the speed limit battery increase, I think, on two oh seven, maybe three oh one, they're both high travel roads, we have extrications on, they're possibly going sixty. Yeah, I mean...
People are doing sixty now.
Okay. You know, head of the board's in store, we've had numerous incidents there, head-on collisions, shut down the road, I mean, so what are we, we're gonna step away and then, you know, call for mutual aid for that, do, you know, heavy, you know, heavy squad piece? I mean, you get a, a bad accident on the interstate, you're gonna need to call mutual aid now.
Well, I mean, from what you're saying, we can, we can plan for every possible scenario, but when we do that, you know, we're really spending a lot of money for the, for the points and why, so it's probably better from a planning perspective, and we're doing, I'm over here sitting on the planning side, and I've said this before, but I don't know anybody over here who's watched their house burned down, but I have. So I got a little bit more of an emotional experience involved, so how do we get more of you guys out, you know, period? My thing is planning, I'm gonna plan to get as much equipment as we can, as many people as we can hire full-time, do whatever we can do to get volunteers out. So, you know, we're gonna have to meet somewhere in the middle, you know, I was here when we got towers, because people on the west side in Bowling Green said they needed towers, so we planned for towers. We didn't really use them as much as we should have, but we did. So I'm a little sensitive to getting everything we need, or think we need, but making sure we have, you know, enough. Does that make sense to you?
I, I believe it, yes, sir.
Um, it's showing here, engine one replaced twenty-two. So that, that's the next one, which would be the wagon?
Because the wagon will drop down, the engine will move into the wagon spot.
Correct. So the wagon, the current wagon one would go into surplus, go somewhere away from here. Engine one would go down, now we're from wagon one. So you would have, new engine with a thousand, you would have engine one, seven fifty, twelve one. Twelve one. Um, so you would have a thousand, you would have twelve fifty, and what the chief is proposing, that you would have also, you would have a third truck with water, which began the squad if I were to have it.
If that's what's gonna happen.
Correct. That, that's, that's what this is saying, that's what, that's it.
Every time, they get three trucks out.
Understood, but one's, one's out. There's that one that broke. At least with two with water.
And I don't know if you, can, can you have this drop, I mean, they're trying to put I mean, they're trying to put out a fire, you know, in Bowling Green is really bad, can, can they have, have somebody just drop a truck to?
We don't, we don't encourage, we don't encourage. But it, it's happened.
Under desperation.
It's happened by pretty much anybody in this room, but it happens.
Yeah, I'm saying you have to, right now, staff. No, I'm just saying the structure is definitely.
Staff of two people.
Still not.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we, do we take the truck operator only? Yes, yeah, I mean.
If you just pump the water down the street, you're only going to look out. It depends on what you're asking.
A tanker?
Yeah, that's, that's my point. If it's really a situation of desperation, you can get one guy to drive the extra tanker out, which would be the third vehicle out.
Correct. Or the squad. Have I taken that operator only because I knew a group was going there? Yes. Take that operator only so that you have the equipment only being utilized, yes.
So, so listen to y'all's understanding was that engine one's getting replaced, we're becoming ladder one, wagon one goes away, you were just going to have two trucks sitting there before. Is that what you're understanding, all of the board today?
Yes.
That's what we understood.
We understood that we all.
I had a meeting with chief and I, which stood slightly different, yes, but do I feel that an engine should come before a squad there? Yes. That company one, yes.
Um, go ahead. We all have, we all have wants. Unfortunately, most of us in our daily life have one of our needs the most. And that's what we need to think about. We need, in my opinion, we need for everything to rely on, also on that side of the table that, you know, that we do, and we can get it all together. But we need to decide tonight whether we order a new squad. And if you want it first, you're in line first, but not, I'm not going to promise you when you get in line next, we're going to sit down and talk to you without it.
We got one coming. We got one coming.
We got one coming somewhere. Look, I can't, my personal opinion is we know we need replacement equipment, but working on this, we're going to lose $35,000 of taxpayers' money to dump in state water. So whoever wants it?
I, I won't.
This is Mr. Thomas.
Carwood Church Station will be happy to take it.
So.
I got three places for it.
Through my asking first.
You know, my opinion, the recommendation, it goes to Bowling Green. I, I put that in, uh, just particularly lap and, uh, heart right into your back on a decision, come to one.
Yeah, we feel that ladies should get it before, up due to the high mileage.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we totally agree on that.
Um, so.
That leaves us with a question. If we were to put a, use the specs from an engine that we just purchased and throw that into the mix and send it to squad, is that something that's even? These will get out of the work quickly?
If we want to buy that truck, that we just bought for frog level, that, that's a possibility?
Same vendor, same specs, same.
Same vendor, same specs, that's a possibility. Um, I don't know that the pricing will be the same because we have to go through that process. If that's, if that's the desire, we would certainly do that. That would turn it around in a timely way versus another two.
It would keep us in our, at least in our, in our window to get a, get a piece every fall.
It would be cheaper to buy an engine as well.
Yes, sir. Take that, yeah, heart, whiskey that on the knob.
So we have one squad then, one engine, then there's not the two squads.
They're not going to be identical, they're not going to have water on there, they're not going to have water. But they'll have a new engine. But eventually would become identical when we do.
Ours is an engine, it's not a squad, we don't have a squad in front of them.
Chief, can I ask you, maybe, can I just ask you to replace one of your CIP? Want to hear your side of things. What was the reason, given, is, given chief, or all these concerns? What were the reasons that you put the squad ahead of the engine?
Again, one of the issues, we already said why we wanted the squads, at the time, I can't come to you and say we need to replace a 10-year-old engine in 2016. I just, you know, we would have, we would, we were making repairs to see if it would last that 20 years in which we bought it for. Uh, that was a, a big driver for that. That was one of our newest trucks in the fleet, and I'm not going to come to you and ask for that replacement. Having that ability, we've had issues in, in Bowling Green and other stations where we just don't have enough engines. Having that squad with water on there for a short period of time, it can function as an engine. Not ideal, but it can fill that slot instead of me taking a truck out of Port Royal, other station to put in there, Sparta, I think we borrowed their truck too, uh, to do that because Bowling Green is a busy station.
Since you're the, since you're the expert at fire chief, is your, still your recommendation to do, go ahead with the squad?
It is my recommendation to do that. And next year, buy an engine.
Here's my, I have a.
Can, can we leave this, Chief Parrish?
Well, I got, before we leave this topic, we're buying two, and we're stuck in this trap now, we're going to buy two squads a year apart. 19 years from now, we're going to have to buy two squads a year apart instead of, because a fire truck, I mean, an engine's cheaper, is that not true? So we're buying two expensive pieces back to back instead of staggering them, which is, which is what our problem was to begin with, with, even with the, with the lab, with the, with the ladder trucks, is we bought two back-to-back used and they both ended up being equally junk at the same time.
Two limits, especially.
Back to back. But we're going to, we're, we're now saying that these newer trucks don't last as long. We, we've all heard that the new trucks don't last as long. We're going to buy two, we're going to buy two squads back to back, knowing that we're probably, 10 years will be, 15 will be optimal, 10's probably where it's going, based on what I've heard from all the volunteers, is the newer trucks, it's about a 10-year lifespan in the new truck. Is, is that not, I mean, I think I've heard that universally.
Is longer than that if you look at other things.
Well, okay, I'll go fifth, but we're buying two expensive pieces back to back instead of staggering them so that they're staggered in the county that way. And, and I'm looking at it from that perspective, is, I don't know where we're going to be 10 years from now, but let's look backwards and look where we've been. We went 20 years and we're trying to buy fire trucks, and I'm just looking to.
You don't want to go back to 2008? I could take that.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying I'm looking back past 2000, I'm looking back to 2000, looking in the late 90s when everything was basically bought. That's my concern of buying both of these squads back to back is that that's going to be the replacement and you're going to have the same manufacturer at the same time. So the defects you get are going to both probably be in both trucks.
So, so when they got 2007 same and they got their own back?
Yeah, they're different manufacturers.
No, they're the same truck. It's engines.
There's got different trucks.
I mean, I'd like to see us buy the fire truck and, and skip the squad one or two years so that there's some distance between them and the cost isn't piled up on somebody down the road. Just my thing.
Excuse me, if I would please the board, my name is Justin Chanel. I'm a member of the Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Company. I come from a long line of volunteer firefighters and professional firefighters. I came from a company just recently and moved to Virginia that was 100% volunteer. When the tongues dropped, 26 members would come in that door. A question was asked, why is that? I'd like to address all the concerns, I'd like to address this and hopefully help you understand why you don't have volunteers right now in Caroline County. It's called pride. It's called pride in your company, it's called pride in your station. The pride is dwindling based upon mistakes that were made in the past. So we're talking about water getting to the fire. Water is a very important thing. If you don't have water, you can't put the fire out, obviously, correct? We're also talking about a 20-year CIP. I looked at the CIP, I read it inside and out. The CIP calls for 20-year replacement on most rigs. That will not happen, I can tell you that. In the last seven years, I've spec'd six trucks. Of those six trucks, two of them are already out of service because the manufacturer's quality is not good. The only way to get a good quality truck is by spending the extra money. Regrettably, Caroline County does not have that money to spend. When I say extra money, you need to buy a heavy-duty chassis, a severe service chassis such as FDNY or Washington DC buys. That's why they get the, the gears out of their truck in the high mileage. Regrettably, we don't have that $75,000, $100,000 to spend, so we're buying what we can afford. My concern is in a couple of years, these new trucks that are being run hard are going to fall apart. Now, yes, the frog level truck and the company three truck at Port Royal probably are not going to fall apart because they're not run as hard. But what, engine one, engine two, squad one, squad two, they're extremely hard-rammed trucks. Trucks are running in and out of that station door multiple times. I know this because I ride that truck very often. Very often. My concern is in five, six years, we put a brand-new rig into that station, it's going to be needing replaced already, just like the current engine one, which is currently 12-years-old, it needs replaced. So we're going to purchase, according to the CIP, now the new understanding of the CIP is we're going to purchase a new engine. That'll create a, put a new engine in company one, which will put a 12-year-old engine that we already put $127,000 into, into, into the second out piece. We're going to put another $127,000 into that engine before we replace it. Do the math with me real quick. That's almost an entirely new engine right there.
No? If I may interject.
We're $200,000, we're $200,000 from that.
The alternative, the alternative is we keep wagon one and you can have a 35-year-old piece of apparatus in 10 years, which is I-7. Okay? Or, the alternative, we go down a different path, we buy you two brand-new engines, which we're trying to resolve, we're trying to keep one in reserve by having the second one as being a wet squad, brand-new engine, yeah, you're going to run the wheels off of it. But you can't, I understand what, I hear you and I agree with you. It's just you've got to look at the, you've got to look at the alternatives, and we don't have an unlimited checkbook, and we're buying, yes, our, our reserve engine was a commercial chassis, that it's a little bit lighter duty. I agree. It was better than the alternatives, because alternatives really sucked.
Well, I think, I think, I think I was misunderstood. I'm not asking you to change your replacement plan, I'm asking you to look at the long-term order. I'm looking at us, looking at the categories we're replacing, I'm asking us to look at the timeframe that we're replacing, and I think Chief Lawson's done a great job. We need a CIP, we need to have a plan, we need to have a plan to look forward, but we need to have a realistic plan. If we actually think we're going to get 20 years out of any rig, we're crazy. We already have 12-year-old rigs that are dying. If we think we're going to get that, we're, we're also crazy. But I want to, you can hold on a second here, I apologize. You'd ask, sir, why we're not getting volunteers out? You ask, well, what is the golden ticket to get people to come to that station? I can tell you what the golden ticket is. The golden ticket is to have pride, is to have pride in the volunteer company that you respond with. The pride of that, and the reason, what I'm asking for, and the brief, one thing that Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department is asking for is we're asking for our name on the side of our truck. We're asking that when we get on that truck, that we're responding as a member of Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department. Volunteers who are putting out the fire, who are responding to assist you. We are a member of Caroline County Fire and Rescue, where we are each, our own identity, we each respond as volunteers, and we are asking as a volunteer organization that we retain that identity and that we continue to be a strong volunteer organization.
And I, before you go, let me ask you just a quick question, because I, I made a note. You said pride is dwindling because of mistakes made in the past.
Because people in the past did not bring back their decisions to the company. Decisions were made without the company being brought into it. We as a company, or an organization.
Decisions by?
By past leadership of our company.
By our leadership?
Yes, our leadership, our leadership made mistakes, then bring back decisions to the company for the company to vote on. So decisions were made without the company making a vote, and now we're to a point where the, where decisions were made that we have no backing to, like the company, you know, yes, this decision was made and we can't disagree with it, it's in writing, this decision was made.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was not the board who made those mistakes.
No, sir.
Because as a senior member of the board, we pretty much did what we thought the volunteer wanted.
Yes, sir.
Including towers, you know, right or wrong, including what the volunteers and staff said they wanted, so.
Thank you. Point of clarification, there will be a public comment, and that is stopped right now because we just interrupted Bowling Green from their comments and I saw that this, Chief Parrish just got it. So y'all just hang in there, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Chief, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, also in the touch base, continuing on the CIP here, um, you know, look over the second page, our brush truck was going to get replaced and then our utility. And, um, when I asked the chief officer, he said it would be replaced with non-emergent vehicle, a station vehicle, run areas and stuff in, and I, he said that yes, we could go and buy our own apparatus to, you know, instead of getting that from the county. And, uh, you know, I didn't get clarification from him, that's my fault, but, uh, you know, if the CIP went and that apparatus marketing guy went, then we would be buying the apparatus that would have to be marketed to Caroline County specification, which we can buy 100% solely with our department money and, I, I mean, I'd, I'd never reached clarification on that. So in here it says that, you know, utilities can be marketed as DC1 unit is outside right now, which we pretty much just have to bottoming our name on it.
And that, that's a good point, that policy doesn't interest independently purchased vehicles. How we would handle that is the same way we handle Lady Smith's truck, which is an MOU, but it would be labeled in accordance with, you know, people would keep them up, it would have your name on it just like it does today. But we would allow that at the next step.
But they would have to do some things that are consistent for safety protocol.
It would have to be dollars, but their, their name would be the, just like Lady Smith's.
Which, I mean, you know, right now we have county seals in our design and every single apparatus that we have, so, I mean, I've got other topics that they, I mean, we want to do longer than one other topic. So, touch base on, uh, you know, that, that truck, uh, the, the utility, also I wanted to bring up that currently we have squad one, squad two, and there is truck, squad three, they all have air SCBA fulfillment capability on those apparatus, and the new squad would not have that, would need, Chief, that would address by saying that we have an air trailer and that has to be pulled to the scene if needed, that the air trailer doesn't get out. You know, I, I can't have a member at my station that, you know, tell them, hey, I need to bring the air trailer instead of bringing a fire apparatus to the scene, so, plus pulling a trailer to emergency operating, you know, I, I don't feel, you know, pulling a trailer to the emergency scene would be necessarily safe. I would say pull it not emergent to the scene, but, um, we don't have, we won't have the ability to purchase at least two main trucks to fill on, on site. Yes, they will have more cylinders, I talked to you about that, but that's something that we are using off these two trucks.
Oh, we do need.
Um, if you're in a work incident for a long time, you might need to be really good at SCBA.
But both of them are.
Yeah, I mean, on a structural fire, you know, yes.
Next.
I mean, it, it doesn't get out, but that was overall, I don't know, I mean, it costs, but it's just that.
Well, it, it doesn't get out because we have an alternative piece to that. The reason we bought the air trailer is so that it can be pulled to emergencies if we need it, it serves as a generator, light tower, and it can fill bombs. Uh, and we can follow the training if we need to, not take a truck out of service, it can stay in the station, function of the station compressor. We have the onboard system, especially in squad one, the cascade bottles are built into the truck, when they need to be hydro, back of the truck needs to be disassembled. The last time that was done is because there was damage to the truck, it needed bodywork in the back, and that's when we hydrod those bombs and secure air distension container. So, we purchased the air trailer in anticipation of moving forward with that as our, both the station compressor and a compressor we brought out. I agree with Mr. Rule, you don't go lights and sirens, it's not a 7,000-pound trailer, uh, but it is meant to be pulled to the scene and operated, so. The new squads each will have about 12 air cylinders in addition. All the engines carry spare air cylinders, so, we have that capability, that capacity, but today we don't really need to use the air trailer because we have each squad one or squad three that has air on it.
But the new squads won't have air.
New squads won't have it.
There's just a couple other things that I had on, you know, operations that I have to deal with. I, I didn't necessarily, I mean, of course, we didn't have 10 hours to sit down with Chief, I didn't have 10 hours to sit down with Chief Lawson to explain every single thing that's on my mind, but, um, you know, I, I just want the board to, to realize, you know, I don't want us to go backwards and, um, add more and more services to the citizens and through department roads, but I, you know, I think that's important to have that stuff there. Uh, one thing that I wasn't in the senior leadership department, I didn't have the right to say anything, you know, I voiced my concerns to the leadership, it didn't go anywhere, but, um, you know, I don't know how far it got out with the removal. We had EMS supplies on our engines that were ALS equipped, now they're now down to ELS. That, that was one thing that I did not agree with because having that ALS equipment there, you know, it was good if that truck got out with the medic on it, we could provide that service on scene. Doesn't happen all the time, no. I don't know the numbers of the staffing for how many times ALS members are on that apparatus, but that was one thing that kind of concerned me that that, that's been changed. Also, I mean, there's, just with the staffing that we currently have, and I didn't get, again, to bring this up in Chief's office, but I feel that, um, you know, when they're replacing the, the engine, the career staff, I feel that, you know, it's almost important that they, they need to stay there because then that's fire suppression for the whole county, you know, the citizens they call now, when they got a structural fire, they, know, the citizens, they call now, when they got a structured fire, they, they want a fire truck there, they don't want, you know, somebody that's riding back to the, you know, hospital ambulances because they don't staff, which we have more EMS calls, we do fire calls, that's, that's to be given. How do we solve that? You know, get another ambulance, and then that gives more, you know, paid career staff, you know, I guess we don't have the money for that to fund it forward right now at this exact moment, but I wish to reach a resolution to try to keep the career staff on the engine, so that, you know, they can provide that service 24/7, truly 24/7, 365. I know that's important, coming from, you know, the volunteer organization, and then that's where we supplement it, you know, if they're out, and they're on a medical call, we try to get there and take attention, provide that service. Does it happen all the time? No, unfortunately, but we try, so.
And that's one of those things, you can't, you can't call. I mean, if I'm having a heart attack, I'm there for you to get that, but I work that out with ambulance, yeah. So, you know, it just depends on...
You'll change your mind when the house is burnt out.
Uh, well, no, 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 that's close. But, again, if I was Mr. Thomas, I would want that out, so I would imagine that we can, we can, that's, yeah, what we got.
This was in the city, it wasn't true. Thank you. Um, you know, I would, things have changed over the last, you know, five, 10 years, the whole volunteer process has gotten more lengthy, it's a determined version of volunteering, you know, I believe so, yes, they have to restart the process, they get bored, you know, they don't finish the process, they're not motivated, it's not as easy. When I first started, I had to sign a couple pieces of papers, I turned into the volunteer organization I was in, and I understand we got, you know, protocols and stuff, but I feel right now, it's, it's pretty lengthy, it takes quite a bit to get somebody onboard, you know, force training takes almost clear whichever way you go, EMS or fire, I just feel that we should probably work on that, trying to get the volunteers, the numbers are hard to force between them, so that's not good.
And it's not just you one.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I say, we had a fluke last month, we sat 1,500 hours versus 700, you know, maintaining six, 700 hours for the months prior to that, so, I told you guys before, it's roughly three to four people last month, got it, you know, seven to nine people, you do the hours, calculate it out, they are working, but I just feel like there's some, some things that can be utilized different, you know, that's just, just me speaking on behalf of the company.
We just want some less training, I mean, it just has to be required, so, we're stopped right now. Thank you very much, Chief.
How are you doing?
I'm doing fine.
I'm glad to see all of you up here, and you don't know how glad I am to live. I feel like a chihuahua, and I just witnessed two bulldogs fighting, and I'm not sure that I want to get in that bulldog fight, and that's what I'm just gonna say about the, the fire department and rescue squad right now. It's like two bulldogs fighting, and I don't feel like getting involved with them right now. However, I do have a couple of things I'd like to say, and first, it was with the tanker at Port Royal. He actually needed the tanker that I, because he is about the same, in the same position that Upper Carolina is, we have no hydrants just to go do. And we, when we bought trucks, we bought large trucks, we probably have a engine that carries, it does, carries 750 gallons, and we have a tanker that carries 3,000 gallons. Now, we bought those vehicles because of the area that we were in, no hydrants. So I, if, if, if Port Royal is getting ready to lose a tanker, then I, I'm gonna look out for them, because we got a couple of other places in the county that does not have hydrants. And water, you know, when you're a firefighter, what is the most thing that you always use is water, and if you wind up with no water, then you might as well stay at home. In fact, it's better to stay at home, because you don't have to do a whole lot of fighting when you get there.
I remember being on a fire in Port Royal, we had 27 tankers on that fire.
Yeah, and the other thing is the squad...
No, I saved three-quarters of the house. It was a big house, we had a lot saved.
We kept knocking it down, we ran out of water, it started back up, next truck we get there, we knock it down, we couldn't maintain it. There was a gap in the initial, we kept getting one more truck.
This particular fire was in Port of Begle Bay, so it was a long run back to the town to get water.
Is that dry hydrant you said?
Yeah, that, that helped, once we got it set up. Dry hydrants, it's not, you don't go down there and hook it up, it's, it takes a couple minutes to set up.
We also had mechanical issues with the first rig that we sent to it, so it took a while...
Yeah.
For that to actually work out.
Chief, make you feel better. Don't worry, Port Royal right now, the tanker is still working, it's got fairly low mileage, it's just got some age on it, but not all of this, you know, some of it is aging.
I just, everybody...
But we've got them on the list.
That a firefighter can't do anything with the water.
Yep.
And if they, they feel like, and they can, can support a tanker, then I'll go along with what they say. The other, the other thing I have to talk about is the squads. Back 10 years ago, we, at our station, we had Jaws of Life and all kinds of, of, of exication equipment. Right now, we have a, a Jaws of Life, which is a, a battery-powered kind, and we are able to knock a door, you know, and maybe squeeze out a dent to get somebody out of a vehicle, but with the ability of knowing that somewhere in the tanker, in the county, there will be a squad coming with whatever else we need. So we don't want to get involved in the, in the squad deal, then we'll let y'all work it out, because I don't know that we'll ever have to have a squad in Upper Carolina. And what Mr. Thomas was saying a while ago, I think, I think our engine now has got 24 years on it, so that's one of them old, hard kind.
No, that's not, that's not old.
Yeah, but that...
24 is not old, okay? You and I are not old, Chief.
Yeah, but what I was getting at was that the opinion is that the newer engines are not, not, won't last, or not as good as the old ones. So I, I challenge anybody that have gotten a new engine and it lasts two years, if you want to come and crave that engine with my full, my full gun, you may consider it.
Coach, it's all right.
Yeah.
I think everyone would just like it, might have it.
I think he would.
That's all I have, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Peters.
My, my point of being here was finding out some of the other things that were going on, I wasn't aware that we were gonna get into tankers and that type of stuff, but that's my, that's my spiel.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. All right, so let's give any other, where else can we put it up to the public?
Well, there's one alternative that potentially is on the place to help expand this longevity of apparatus that some people have spoke to, that we can't get 20 years out of an engine in reality. You can if you rotate fire engines throughout the county. That's an alternative that nobody wants to discuss, or approach, or anything else, and the chief has stayed away from, quite frankly, because he's not endorsement of that. But that is certainly a viable option, because an engine in Lady Smith is not gonna last nearly as long as if you put it in Sparta, or you put it in Port Royal, or you put it in Upper Carolina. But the chief has stayed away from that, and, you know, with that being said, certain things have to get shuffled among the CIP accordingly. But if, if the folks in general would like to approach that, then, you know, maybe that's a viable option on the table moving forward.
That's how we did the ambulance, that's why ambulances go as long as they do.
Yes, you can certainly extend that 10 to 15-year lifespan if you move that truck to a station that doesn't run 1,200, 1,300 calls a year, and it goes to a station that only runs two in a whole year.
But that highlights standardization.
Yes.
Without a doubt.
Yes.
Also takes away some of that company pride that we mentioned earlier.
The trucks, the fire trucks still do have this issue, you know, I mean, it's got a problem.
Some stations can't accommodate. I can't fit Squad Two in his engine bay.
Oh, yeah, Port Royal can't fit, but Port Royal's truck can, if nothing else is going on.
So, I mean, there's other, there's other alternatives, but, you know, that's something we've stayed away from here longevity-wise over the 25-plus years of it.
You could maybe, you could have fit five-ish.
Can't go there.
No, I'm just saying, we had four in there.
They're deep, they're deep in the days.
Three doors. Three doors, we put a door in the back, we had the tire in there, and then three bigger trucks, and then the rush utility set outside, now the utility's inside with the air trailer. You know, you can move some things around, you could fit four big ones, five big ones if you need them.
And on top of that, some of the different agencies have different needs than some of the others. For instance, in Frog Level, I've got three saw, four sawmills, and more farms I know what to do with. So one of my concerns, even though it's not a squad, it's a squad item, is like a man and machine gun, if somebody gets their arm or something trapped in there. And granted, I know the squads will have it, and hopefully they'll be coming, but that's not something that they're going to need, say, on Engine Two, because they've got the squad in the house. And that's something that Frog Level's going to purchase to match the squads identically at some point, so that, to keep that standardization, but that'll be on our rig, where if we did that rotation, some of that stuff isn't gonna work.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open up for anyone sitting out there listening to all the comments of your friends and fellow volunteers to come up and speak. I would like to use the same rules that we use in our regular board meeting, because that's what this is. Try to limit your comments to three minutes, and please tell us your name and what station you're with. So anybody who'd like to come up and make a comment? There'll be 10 people saying the same thing, or even if it has a good say, if you want to fit in, or, and the flowers, please feel free.
I'm the first one. I need Brian Marmaduke, I'm a member of the President, and a member of Company One. Getting back, I guess, we probably rode this horse a lot, and all four hooves are stuck in the air, but on the Squad One, getting back to Squad One, or do you? If we were able to work it out, that we move Squad Two to the first truck coming out, and get an identical one coming out as far as, you know, going on it tonight or whatever, to save the 32,000. One thing that we may want to look at as far as water problems is if we went from, on the second truck, from a 500-gallon water tank to a 750-gallon water tank, which would be matching what we already have in their engine, or the, the old wagon. I don't think, if you went back to KME, that the price would be all that much different. We may have to raise the truck a few inches, but I don't think you would lose a whole lot of compartment space. Just a suggestion, maybe something strongly to look at that would help that whole process a little bit better. I know, played it, talked about, you know, forcing more water, and if we did that, I realize the only difference in the two trucks would be the tank size, no appearance to it whatsoever. Thank you.
I guess they're pretty tight.
Well, the problem is, if we, the truck is already big, like, flat out, it is a long and tall truck as it is today. It's, GBW's over 50,000 now, on a single axis. We, looking at Squad Two and its design, when you put on more water, you're losing compartment space. So for me, this 500 was a compromise estate within the engine, but it gave me the maximum amount of compartment space.
So if you were taking top off, you're not gonna see all this empty caverns sitting beside the bar?
No. No, the, the committee did an excellent job of making sure everything, every space on there could be utilized, so, even above the pump panel, there's a transverse compartment, which would be dead space typically where they got Stokes baskets. The group did a good job of utilizing every inch of space.
So, does anyone else who'd like to come up and speak? Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Jason Sadoway, Bowling Green Fire Department Vice President. I just, I want to entertain that, that option that we spoke of earlier, switching Squad One and, and our engine, whatever you want to call it, in the CIP. Push our squad out a little bit longer, I think we would really need an engine replacement before the squad. One comment on the 500 gallons of a squad, if that's pushed to a frontline engine, 500 gallons is not a safety measure. That can seriously get somebody, it gives them just enough water to feel safe, but it's just enough water to get you in trouble. You make a long push into a house with 500 gallons of engine, then you run out of water quickly, what are you gonna do? You're gonna end up getting somebody hurt if 500 gallons. And my philosophy on a squad, if you want a wet squad, you need to put it in place for vehicle fires, or you need to make it a rescue engine and put 750 or 1,000 on it. That's, that's my two cents on the wet part, but I just feel like 500 gallons is just, it's gonna end up maybe potentially getting somebody hurt if they take that on the engine. On a, on a house fire, that's the only truck that gets out, no other trucks coming for at least 15 to 20 minutes in Lady Smith to the staff. Somebody can get hurt with 500 gallons of water. It's, it's a little bit too much for vehicle fires, but not quite enough for house fires. If you look at the city departments, the, oh, the departments that have 500 gallons, they're all in hydrant areas, so, that's, that's my take on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I was just waiting for you.
Take me three minutes, if you'd like.
Just thinking about one of those cookies.
I'm JP Wilkerson, President, Company Three. Port Royal County Council Number, has been with the Port Royal Department for 38 years plus now. Just a couple of things. Going through the issue with Tanker Three, no, we've still got some life left in Tanker Three, and our concern is, it's not even considered right now in the budget that I, that I know of for any type of replacement. And I think a house, value of my house in Port Royal is just as valuable as one anywhere else in the county, and I deserve the same protection. Now, we can say, well, we don't always get two trucks there, no, we don't. But I don't want to be the one to have to explain to people why you run out of water and another truck's not coming, and you don't have the capability of getting the second truck. But we're a little ways away from that, and I think that will take you up the sell. Other thing I want to speak to is Company Four. I didn't know this, and y'all may not know this, that in some of the floods that we've had, big rains, they had four feet of water in their station. So you're gonna buy a half-a-million-dollar fire truck and put in four feet of water. They need help with the building and, and their property, and I think if y'all, y'all have an opportunity to do that and don't do it, after, after just been explained the situation they're in, then that takes it, kind of how that guy is hanging in, one of how, how something like that can happen. When it rains, they take one truck out, and put it on one side of the creek, and the other truck, they put it on the other side of the creek, so they can run calls either direction. This day and time, that's just, that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
You would still have to do that with the new station?
First, remove first unit on, on side of the creek.
Squad Three, absolutely.
Anyone else who'd like to speak?
I fixed the creek.
Anyone else?
I just want to get in.
All right, we're gonna close public comment, and Chief Lott, this, you wouldn't make any points in your voice?
Uh, no, I think, I think I'm good. If, if the board does choose to, obviously, flip-flop those two trucks and purchase an engine instead, I would recommend we just use the same mid-spec as Engine Five and we'd do with that if that is the case. What's your recommendation? I'm gonna continue to recommend we stay with the two squads, back-to-back, and then buy a new engine next year, and that will give them Bowling Green time to, to look at an engine, to sit down and draw out what we really need for the, what money we do have.
Because we got an engine now, they, they have, they, what the basics are.
It would be exactly as Frog Level. And while Frog Levels is almost identical to Port Royal's, it does have some big differences because we changed the manufacturer, we did that for the lowest price, but they had the ability to put input, like Justin Chanel said, you know, we looked at everything from the ground up, and I think that's important. Chanel said, you know, we looked at everything from the ground up, and I think that's important versus just getting a truck that somebody else got. I think it's important to go through that whole process.
What would something like that happen to you? Would the September One time note still be in play? For the engine? For the steel tariff fee initially?
I don't know what Spartan is going to do as hard as that. We don't have them, we weren't entertaining them as hard as they were. But they would have to take, Engine Five, I'm sure, would go up and will be paid for company, you know, 2% regardless. So I don't have any pricing that I can throw at. It would be less than the six.
You would have to, that's right.
Thank you. Board members, comments?
I'd still like to know, Bowling Green, do you really want an engine over a squad? Even if you ordered the exact same, the exact same thing, the flood level, is that going to be sufficient?
I mean, it's going to be the exact same thing as Frog Level, because I mean, we've standardized that, we often say so. Every truck's been standardized in the county. You've got an engine standardization, brush, squad. Do we have?
If you're going to buy an engine now or next year, you want to do it standard, they have to fit in by spec. And again, you want to have a little flexibility, but you sit here all night preaching standardization. So why would we need a year to tweak the engine? We have engines that...
I mean, only after we come in, yes, we do feel those two engines, I mean, they roughly have 150,000 miles each. I mean, the 94 ran one in 2006 this year so far to date, it's been on both cars. What do I think, being in that station, I think that squad has some more years. Could it, could the engine blow up tomorrow? Could it, it's 20 something years old, that's just a chance you've got to take, but, you know. And not, I mean, you got to, I don't know the statistics behind, you know, vehicle accidents virtually higher.
The reason I ask is, if we decide on quarter one, I don't want to call, do this ground and say, we want this. Because it could happen, just like it's...
Just talking about the area, you were talking about a 94 engine and a 97 squad, so they're both past years.
There's some value there. At the end of the day, is it, we, in 2008, as you covered, there was no purchasing, and we are behind. So either way, you go here, we're probably, we're split hairs. At the end of the day, if we are committed to getting a squad in the following year to address that issue, we can get the engine now. If we go with Engine Five, we can make that order very quickly and still get it as Corian said, all, I mean, we have trucks that need to be replaced, I mean, that's...
Thank you, Chief.
I'm just saying, you know, we sit here and listen, and we, everyone tonight, that Chief Loftus is here for reasons to help us put our plan in place. He's sitting here, I can't go against what he's asking based on what he wants, how he believes he should proceed. And I think it's foolish of us on this side of the board, if he believes that, and we've hired him to do that, then we should let him do the job. He's making the recommendations, what, how he thinks we need to progress going forward. So I just, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus, anything?
Well, I have some things that may be item eight, but of course, you know, I've got an issue with Cool Water Drive and VDOT. Because I just went through the schedule, the weight thing. I can't get a squad, I can't get an engine. I can only get an ambulance down Cool Water Drive because of VDOT weight restrictions, and the sheriff has said he wouldn't, wouldn't monitor to make sure trucks, big trucks didn't come on there, so I got the issue with that, but I guess I'll wait for number eight.
Is that the bridge doing a little bit more drought once?
Yes.
The wooden bridge?
It's, it was, it just got weight restricted lower last week by VDOT.
That exception wasn't much.
Yeah. I was just going through all the things we have, nothing bad. Okay. Then I got a facial hair problem.
Anyone else on the board, Mr. Forehand?
I just want to make a comment. For those that don't know, I was a volunteer for 12 years. I liked it so much that I went and got a bachelor's degree in fire administration. I enjoy it. Every time I hear the sirens, "Please, Smith." Yeah, I want to be one. There are a lot of strong personalities in the fire service. It's probably, I've said many times before, it's a, it's a collection of strong personalities for a reason, but that's a double-edged sword. And with all these strong personalities and experience and training that we're very good at, come differing opinions. And a lot of different personalities. And I think sometimes we are our own worst enemy, and we fixate, as people, we fixate on things too much that are negative, and we don't see a lot of the positives. And I would like to take just a moment, say, we didn't buy a fire truck for eight years, okay? Spartas Fire Station floods. We have, we have units that are breaking down, almost dead. We made a bad decisions with towers, okay? We've done some mistakes on the volunteer recruitment. Now, all these things, yes, can we keep focusing on those things and just circle the drain? Yeah, we can, and it doesn't do anybody any good. However, we can focus on that, we've got two great fire operatives that are now brand-new in the company, in the county. We've got one coming in a couple of months. We've got one coming in January. We got renovated Station Two. We've got money designated for a couple of other stations. We've got three new ambulances in the last three years. We got a dozen more volunteer, professional staff. We're throwing money at the volunteers. We're trying different things to see what's going to stick and what's, what we can do to incentivize and to get these people energized about firefighting that I had when I was 15 years old. So I felt that I got the bug. I know it's, it can be contagious, but so can negativity. And it's, it kills you. And I'll, I've shared my story about, eight years ago, I was going to join Lady Smith, and they were in a moment of transition. And some of the negativity was awful, and it was a turnoff. And I was very excited about starting my volunteer career up, and I was going to work through that. And number three got diagnosed with the, with the wife, and those plans kind of went out the door. But for now, I plan to get there eventually. But that's, we just all need, I mean, the leadership of volunteers is in front of me in this room. You care, there's no doubt. But I think, I have seen departments where a single individual has run away more people than that person could ever, ever, in two lifetimes, contribute to take the place of all the people that one person ran off. And I think we can all identify a person in our, in our, in our personal lives that has been toxic like that. Okay? So I'm just, I'm asking, as a citizen, as a board member, as a fellow firefighter, hope to be again, try to keep the positive, try to pull these people aside. There's a lot of things that, you know, how we say things. If somebody's screwing up, address it, but address it professionally. People make mistakes, we're all human. None of us haven't made mistakes on the fire ground and in life. But let's, let's try to get past negativity and move forward, because there's a heck of a lot of good things that have happened the last few years and that are going to happen in the, in the coming years. And I say that not because I'm a board member, because I feel like I know my colleagues, whether I'm here or not, we're moving in a great direction. There's a lot of good things that this, he's, that Chief Loftus is doing that needed to get done. They needed to get done, and it wasn't going to happen unless someone is in this role that is keeping, keeping the ship moving in the right direction. So that's, again, it's a little long-winded, I apologize, but that's my heart speaking, and that's where I feel. Please do your part to make that happen.
That's one.
Yeah, I, I, it's kind of hard to pull a, of course. Second of all, I think hell's going to freeze over giving Mr. Underwood, I actually agree on something the second time this year, so. So it's, but I do a couple of things here. One of the things, I think this, to me, in looking at this, to me, this is a little bit of a communication issue in some ways. And I think in going down the line, when I was listening to everyone, I heard several times that, you know, this started, this process started in 2016, people were on board. There may have been one organization that was, you know, had a change in leadership that doesn't agree now, but it was, been a process that's been going on for a while. And I think, in all of the times that I, as I understand, I'm a supervisor, so it's a little different, but Chief Loftus, anytime I have called him, it's immediate a pickup. He gets back to me. If I have a question for him, it's almost immediate. When we talk about employees in this county, you know, I put out on, I have a little Facebook page where I put information out. I've had the opportunity to go and meet with different departments throughout the summer. And I can honestly say that, as far as one of the leaders is concerned, Chief Loftus is one of the best that we have. And so that's why I trust him 100% with the decisions that he makes, and I stand by that. As far as pride is concerned, I get it, I understand it. I've got to be honest with you, if I call 911 because, what happened to Mr. Thomas, because my house is burning down, or I'm having a heart attack, or whatever the case may be, the reality behind it, would I love Lady Smith and Chief Melson or Mr. Stout to be on that call? Absolutely. But the reality behind it, as a citizen, the number one concern is that we get that citizen help. If it comes from Bowling Green, or if it comes from Fort Royal, or if it comes from Frog Level, I don't care, as long as it's coming, someone's coming to help me from this county. And that's what the citizens care about. And they need help when they're calling 911. And so that's basically really what I have to say. So I'm, I'm going, when I make my vote, I'm going to make my vote in support of the Chief Loftus's CIP. So thank you.
I'm just going to have one closing comment before we move on to the unfinished business. The pride issue again. Committees work, we've got a basic assignment, we've got basic standards, so much further ahead than we were before. Pride works in both ways. Do not ask me, and hopefully no one else on this board, to meet privately or behind closed doors. I will meet with anyone, anytime. But if it is concerning something that you're unhappy about that has to do with an employee, there will be at least a staff member there out of respect for our employees, just as I would respect you, if you told me something in private that's going on, I would be respectful of you. But don't ask me to disrespect any one or any of our departments, because they all work too hard to stretch your capes dollars as hard as they can. As far as your pride goes, my gosh, what you all do for this county volunteering, if that's not enough pride for you, you're going to have to find it somewhere else, because we're all really proud of the volunteers in this county, regardless of where they volunteer, be it with children, or Humane Society, fire rescue, fire camp. I don't know how much more pride you can build in yourself, other than what you do to save lives, protect property. Where you land on the door is not going to help your pride. Your pride, it comes from your service, that's why you all show up to serve. And the committee has a standard for it, and that's what I support. So hold for yourself your pride, and let's make all these years, the family unit together, all serving Carolina as best they can. So that's my spiel, and I want to thank everybody for being here. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I bet the rest of the people don't come.
If we, if we're going to do that, can I ask the chief about Cool Water Drive, but I guess it's just a melting, really. If you're coming from your station to Carmel Church or Belmont?
Yes, sir.
You're pretty much going to drive down Route One and not Cool Water Drive?
Yes, sir. The address is of concern that I've mentioned, the Chief Loftus are the ones on Duff. The closer end to the bridge on Cool Water, just off the side, because we have to go up, around, and come back. And then Carroll Drive and some other places off Cool Water, sometimes it's a shortcut, but it's not the best route to get to Carmel Church.
So it's, I mean, if you have to respond, what would normally take you 10 minutes is now going to take you 20 minutes in drive?
No, it's, it's, we've, we've, we've gone to the same, we've gone to the same house on Duff Drive before, leaving the firehouse at the same time. The ambulance went up the Route One and then across 207. We cut the shortcut ways, I made the engine driver do at the time, and honestly, we probably should have taken the engine off of the bridge then, because it was overweight then. But I beat them by roughly two minutes. They went by GPS, I went as a pro class, because that's the way I've done it for two decades. Because that was the shortest, the shortest point, the shortest way, two, two points is a straight line, so that's the way we went, it was available. You know, it's...
It's not waiting, the ambulance can still go over the bridge?
Yes, with an exception, with an exception.
I have a road very similar to that road in my first due, and my people are told to go around it. And would it cut off a little bit? Sure. But the reason why they go around it is, and it's pretty much the same as Cool Water, is because if you pass another vehicle, and you go with lights and sirens, by the time they try to flip out and do whatever dumb thing that people do when they see lights and sirens, you're either going to run them in a ditch and hurt somebody or something else. So roads like that, we try to avoid anyways.
Isn't that true, Mr. Sadoway? I had that, I was the victim being run off the road on 630.
But I mean... We try to avoid roads like that when possible.
But, but, I mean, part of it is, we can't get the sheriff to enforce what's there.
That's why they got the exemption.
And now the bridge is deteriorating, so you can't get, I mean, you can't use it at all. The chief just got restrictions back in June, so that's my thing. The other question I have is, I can pretty much, though, we don't have, that one. I can pretty much, though, we don't have a facial hair issue with our firefighters.
Christmas is coming up.
We do.
We do?
We do. And so those that want to wear an SEVA or are qualified to wear an SEVA must be clean-shaven. Those members that aren't been aware of SEVA, can we allow some?
Oh, so volunteers have that option?
Volunteers have that option.
A-folks don't.
Do not, because everybody is subject, myself, Chief Carnet, are subject to wear.
Would I be considered home checked or not? Old?
If you're totally shaved?
No, I mean, well, this is 24 hours growth.
So, Mr. Forehand, I'll tell you, that's a whole issue. That's a rest of the board's name.
Some places, it's enforced more stringently than others, and I was just wondering if we had that.
Okay, as long as you're not putting a mask on. Others?
I would like to say, I hope you guys never put a mask on, but I'm going to do, so I appreciate it, and I'm glad we're standing. Okay, thank you.
All right, that takes us to number six. Approval of Department Fire Rescue Replacement Plan and Marking Plan.
I make a motion to approve the Department Fire Rescue Replacement Plan and Marking Plan.
I just have one question. So we're going to revisit this again, just to make sure that we've replaced wagon one in Bowling Green, because it's not really laid out in the plan.
As far as, we're concerned, it is, but we'll adapt it so that everybody feels it's identified as such. So how do we, you can just, you can update this. Mr. Colley mentioned that in the board meeting, too, so there's that much confusion about that slide.
So I have a motion in a second.
So what you're proposing is that we, the squad that's coming this fall, still vote for Bowling Green, and not Lady Smith as...
No, I thought we made that slot.
That, that's...
The plan is, the plan, if you vote the plan as it is, that is how it would go, but if you voted with a change of motion, it's allowed.
What you guys make of it?
You better register.
So the motion is where you get the first squad, is it Lady Smith?
No, the motion right now is to accept that.
As you said, that's the modification.
Oh. The truck that's coming in in November that was going both where it goes, it's...
Both to two, I said, two to one. I said, both to two.
I'll let my...
So I think it's one to two.
Actually, pride is one to one.
It's one to two. What's going at one goes to two.
How much are they? A second? Oh, I, I mean, I could live with it. I mean, it's a year, they're, it's still going to be the, what we're trying to accomplish, so that's... So we would still order a squad, not an engine now?
Just ordering them back-to-back, I know it's a futile attempt on my part, but back-to-back squads, I just think is a mistake.
I would just throw that out. In 2021, which is not on here, and to me right now, lining those up back-to-back is important because in 2021, I'm asking for you to replace Engine Six, which is upper Caroline, an ambulance, and a million dollars for airbags. So I don't want to stack the years against that. That's going to be enough of a problem to determine that. We got to squeeze in a new station somewhere. Yes, sir.
I think we can do that cheaply, and I'm willing to talk about that.
I don't think, I don't think we're clear about squeezing in the station.
If I may, just so, everybody's clear, the station construction does not show up in Fire Rescue CIP, it is public accountable, public utility. Where does the SCBA replacement show up? That shows up in ours as equipment. Not at this, even though it's high dollars. It's not at this. That one's an apparatus. We know it's out there, it's in and out here, and that is why the trucks are stacked the way they are. We know that's coming, that's... And that's a cheaper engine than 2021.
So we have amended motion, amended section, second. Further discussion, Mr. Forehand?
My only question is, do we want to decide six is next, that squad, we want to go two years, and I can throw it out there. But I think we got to have Engine One replaced with the next new piece versus slide six. I would like to say that six is next, but the truck is utilized significantly less and is more significant. I wrote down...
Well, six probably...
And if there's a shift, that is because we get a little...
I recommend a motion with the second. Is the discussion anywhere but on this floor?
So, motion amended, second amendment, demotion. Further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Number seven, first purchase of...
Squad one.
Squad...
Squad two.
Squad two now.
Squad one, we just, we just switch it to squad one over to squad two. Squad two is to be here in November.
That's the first one. This is the second.
This is the second.
So it'd be squad.
This is where we can take your fire trucks.
So...
I'm recommending you do squad.
All right. We have a, number seven, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a second.
That's one. Second.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All favor? All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We're going to put it on the agenda?
We're going to go ahead with the station?
That's up to the board. It's in the CIP, you can find the money.
We're going to leave it, right?
Monday and Tuesday on the going. Tuesday, Wednesday on the going.
I got a model, I got a 20 model, they can't send.
Send over Ladysmith.
Huh?
Send over Ladysmith.
I'm packing your truck tonight.
If Engine One is slated.
Let me go get it.
CIP, and we'll be working on this next one. Yeah, so I'll submit that.
Y'all still here talking amongst yourselves?
I'll see it. April, I think. Make your budget next month.
Before we get to discussions with this, since we passed the motions, anything else that board wants to discuss? Any other issues?
I've just got, I've got something the board members can look at that's not related to this.
All right, see Mr. Black for handout, please, under all board members. Do, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone move, move.
I got motion here, second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
They got it. For your...